Six oh one. This is a hybrid meeting, which means we're Zooming also in person. The Board of Selectmen, my colleagues, are in person. Select Mr. Graffis is present. Campuchico is present and Selectman Hull is present. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We should say to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we please remain standing?
We would like to have a moment of silence for the following Dighton residents who have passed since our last meeting. Jane M. Sullivan Greenwood, age seventy-two, mother of Planning Board Administrative Assistant, Kerry Easterday. Paul E. Shalikas, age sixty-two, of Norf Dighton, police officer for Swansea for thirty-two years. Jeffrey Hubbard, seventy-four, of Norf Dighton, brother of William Hubbard. Mary Louise Watson, eighty-four, of Dighton. She taught in the Dighton school system for over thirty years. Alseed Tremblay, eighty-eight, of Dighton, retired ICI employee and owner of Dighton Lawnmower Service. And Raymond A. Barrowby Senior, seventy-eight, of Norf Dighton, a veteran of the Marines. He served during the Cuban Missile Crisis. He was a machinist and toolmaker. Our thoughts and condolences go out to their families at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. So our first appointment is with Attorney Salino. It's regarding some land that's on Elm Street. Have you seen the land in your packet? The information in the packet is asking us whether or not we want to waive the right of first refusal for this Chapter sixty-one A property. I'm going to turn this over to Attorney Salino if you want to speak on this, please.
Yes, please. Thank you, Members of the Board, for indulging me via Zoom. I'm currently in Vermont, so I appreciate the courtesy. With respect to my name and information for the record, Peter Salino, lawyer with law offices at five fifty Locust Street in Fall River, Massachusetts. I represent Spectrum LLC, who is petitioning the Board to waive its right of first refusal on the subject parcel. I wrote to your Board by letter dated November ninth of two thousand twenty-one, and at that time, I advised you that Spectrum had a purchase and sale agreement to sell its land, which is identified by your town as Lot eighty-four dash four on map twenty of the assessors for the town of Dighton. The parcel land in the aggregate contains twenty-seven point eight acres. Of that twenty-seven point eight acres, twenty-six point five is designated as so-called chapter land under the forestry program, Chapter sixty-one. There's a remaining piece of land, that's approximately one point three acres, that is not classified as chapter land. And I'm sure, being in Dighton, you've had this type of request before, but you probably know that the general laws require the applicant to write to you, to advise you of the buyer, provide you with a purchase and sale agreement, as well as maps and other identifying information associated with the property, and that you have time to react to that and either exercise your right to purchase it at the same price as set forth in the purchase and sale agreements before you, or waive that right of first refusal, allowing my client to sell it to the third-party buyer. And so that's what we're presenting tonight. I'm really on just to give you that synopsis and to answer any questions that the Board may have, but ultimately, as you know, the decision is yours.
Thank you. So we did receive a letter from the Conservation, as well as the Assessors Office, asking us to waive our right to this property. Did we get something from the Planning Board? I didn't see anything in the packet. Was something in the packet?
It was.
But that's fine if you're saying, okay. Recommend also that we... Does the Board have any questions about this?
I have one quick question, if that's okay.
Selectman Sograffis.
I hope I'm not taking yours, Selectman Hull. Attorney Salino, do you know what the intended use of the parcel will be?
I'm sorry, a little audio crackle. The intended and then it went blank for a minute.
Do you know, if the Board does vote to waive the right of first refusal, do you know what the intended use for the land will be by the new potential owner?
Fair question. I don't know with specificity the other than he wanted some sort of an industrial-type use. He sent a communication... He is also on vacation this week. He sent a communication to our real estate broker indicating that he was satisfied with his due diligence. So ultimately, I think he's moving forward, but I don't... I can't tell you definitively what he's going to do and on which date he's going to open and that sort of thing.
Thank you. Selectman Hull.
Attorney Salino, so you mentioned possibility of industrial usage. Is that land currently zoned for industry?
It is not, and so if you look at the purchase and sale agreement, the contingencies are listed right above the signature lines. And one of the buyer's contingencies was that he wanted to investigate whether or not he could make that use of the property. And, like I said, just based on a text message that I've received and reviewed, he seems satisfied that he can make whatever use he needs to make of the property.
What is it currently zoned as?
It's agricultural land on Elm Street.
So he would need approval from the Planning Board?
I think even the zoning board.
With the residents.
Yeah, it would require a two-thirds town meeting vote to potentially change the zoning.
Change the zoning, yep.
Yeah. I guess I just... In just your... It seems like you're not entirely sure, and that's fine, what it may be used for, but were there ever discussions or ever any interest shown to potentially develop it, like for residential purposes, or that hasn't been mentioned? Again, that would also require a zoning change.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to be evasive to the questions. I don't know the answers. My engagement with my client is to make the presentation to your Board to either seek to release it from sixty-one or not. So I don't know, other than what you see in the purchase and sale. The buyer is represented by counsel. I have corresponded with him via email over the last ninety days or so, but ultimately, the closing hinges on your decision on the issue of right of first refusal.
Are there any other questions from the Board? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to waive the right of first refusal as outlined in Section Eight of Chapter sixty-one of the Massachusetts General Laws relative to the property at zero Elm Street, map twenty, Lot eighty-four dash four, as offered by Spectrum LLC.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Is there any further discussion?
I just wanted to add, I feel, even though we don't necessarily know what the intended use is, I feel confident that despite that, there would still need to be some kind of town meeting vote, and residents would still potentially get a say. So I feel confident that we're, in that sense, we're still retaining that local control. So I'm going to support this.
The town's not in a position to purchase this land, I'm sure. And if it's going to be developed, it may have to go before the Planning Board, and if they're asking for a zoning change, they're going to have to go before the residents. So I'll call for a vote, Selectman Sograffis.
Aye.
Selectman Hull.
Aye.
And Campuchico is also an aye.
Thank you, Attorney Salino.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before we close, may I just ask a procedural question? In Dighton, do you require me to prepare a waiver and to email it to you for signature, or does your counsel prepare it?
I don't think our counsel would prepare it.
So no, typically, I've only done this in a few cases, but typically, the meeting minutes... As I understand them, speak for themselves. Am I right, Allen?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you record the minutes? Is that the evidence of the waiver that gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds?
That serves as our approval, but I believe you would prepare the document that gets recorded.
Okay. Yeah, I'm asking the question because, for instance, in Swansea, I regularly prepare them and the formal signs, though.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think it's the same.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I will do the same.
So if the minutes are the record, then we won't vote on those minutes until January twelfth. Can he proceed in the meantime? I assume he can.
Yes.
Yep.
So yeah, there's a documented vote.
Yeah, so...
Even by virtue of...
Yeah, once you fill out that... Send that form to us, we'll sign off on it, and you should be all set. You can go to the Registry of Deeds and take care of that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the clarity and the courtesy. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
Have fun in Vermont.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is, we won't be calling Jeff Gavala for the Chairman of the Dighton Trials Committee, so we're going to go right into public input. Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak in public input? Anybody else present here wishes to speak at this time, public input? If not, well, Selectman Sograffis, could you give the announcements?
Sure.
Please.
Oh, I see why I got thrown this one with the Xfinity Price Change. I'm just the messenger. Xfinity Price Change Update. Xfinity Services and Pricing Included in Customer Bills Between November twentieth and December nineteenth Did Not List a Change to the Following Service in Error. Service to Additional TV with TV Box and Remote Will Increase $1 to $8.50 Starting December twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. I'm hoping would that come some increased bandwidth as well, because my internet's slow.
You're optimistic.
Yeah. Dighton is Continuing Contact Tracing Efforts. The Board of Selectmen approved funding last week to assist those efforts using ARPA funds. State contact tracing protocols have been updated by the Department of Public Health, and local officials are now prioritizing contacts with only those who test positive for COVID-19. Individuals who test positive should notify their own close contacts, which is anyone who an individual was within six feet of for a combined total of fifteen minutes in a twenty-four-hour period. The Town Clerk's Office is looking for citizens interested in becoming election workers for elections and town meetings. If interested, or you would like more information on what those duties include, please reach out to the Town Clerk's Office by calling five zero eight six six nine five four one one option two. Very important job. There will be a special election held on Saturday, March fifth, two thousand twenty-two, from nine AM to three PM at the Dighton Elementary School for the proposed Bristol-Plymouth Regional Technical School Building Project, and I believe our town administrator did put information on that project on our website, so read up. Very important vote. There is a townwide parking ban in effect through April first, two thousand twenty-two. No person shall allow their vehicle to be parked on the street so as to obstruct snow removal. Thank you.
The next agenda item is the town administrator's report.
So yeah, so yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So first of all, on the FY twenty-three budget process, Ike, you have in your packet the Budget Process Kickoff Letter that the Town Accountant and I sent out this afternoon to all of our department heads, boards, and committees, and we're going to spend a lot of time in the next three to four weeks really working on projecting twenty-three revenues. So however, as we mentioned to the Think Home last week, based on the trends we're seeing, FY twenty-three is going to be a tighter budget process for all of us. So and I think the revenues that we're going to project out based on the FY twenty-two trends are going to prove that out, and I expect at the end of January, after we get the... Sorry, the House... The House two budget numbers, Ike, look... So all of us will have an update on that, but I just wanted to give actually that update. You will see that we have asked... That we've asked for all budget submissions to be submitted by January twenty... So I'm sorry, January thirty-first. That will take us through the month of January. The month of February, I'll spend... So actually, I and the Town Accountant will spend with department heads, so with our boards and committees. In the meantime, too, we'll also bring forward the budget issues that require the Board of Selectmen's approval, so an input as well. And then I anticipate by the end of February, the beginning of March, we'll start the Board of Selectmen process as well. So like, we're on track and have everything under control that way, so we can continue forward... So we can continue moving forward to FY twenty-three. Are there any questions on that?
Thank you for your reports. Selectman Sograffis.
Thank you. Yeah, just a quick question. It's more of a procedural question, because last year... You probably got my email, I'm sorry. Last year was a little bit of a weird year, because we didn't have a town administrator, and I was the chair. So I think the way it had worked in years past, you probably remember from Town Administrator Ehrenstein's tenure, is the chair, along with our executive assistant, who completed her financial management course, and the town administrator would do the initial, like putting together the proposals to bring before the Board of Selectmen. And I'm only talking about the budgets that are under our purview. Is that how you recall it being done? And I'm...
No, I don't. I don't remember last time I was chair that... I just wanted to... You'll remember it, because you were also the acting town administrator at the time, and that's why you think that the chair gets involved. I don't mind getting involved, obviously, but...
I'm okay. You're the chair. You can do it whichever way you want.
Yeah, no, I actually thought it was the Town Accountant and the Town Administrator, but I'd be willing to participate.
I'm fine with that.
If needed.
So yeah, and all of us have a fluid process anyways, where I talk to the chair regularly. So like, I'm... So yeah, when drafting the... So when drafting the Board of Selectmen budget submission, like in all the other submissions that are under our domain, I don't have any problem running that by you. So yeah, so that's that on the... But I do have... So actually, two other quick updates, but if there's any questions on the budget.
One last one, I'm sorry.
Yeah, fine.
So we didn't get the CCC money... I promise this is quick. We didn't get the CCC money, or couldn't. It wasn't an option to apply for the budget forecasting.
Yes.
So my question is, like, what... And just a quick, two-second summary, like, how will you and the Town Accountant be doing that? I have no experience in it, so I'm curious.
All right. So as I mentioned, we're going to start our forecasting efforts... So as I mentioned, we're going to start our forecasting, look at revenue. So then, looking back at the last five years of revenues and projecting... So actually, forward for twenty-three and beyond. So like, and then, once we do that, because you can't have any expenses unless you don't have revenues. So after we... So I'd say by the end of January, we'll have an idea, like, in a plan or... I actually understand trends, where we might be going with revenues. So then, in the spring, especially based on the DLS and the financial management review, after that, we think they'll call attention to that issue as well. So then, after that, we can continue on with our expenses.
Awesome. Thank you.
Nope, that's fine.
Do you have your hand... No. So regarding that review, the other members of the Board will also be meeting with the Financial Management Evaluation Group that's coming in, where they also get to meet?
So like, I haven't heard... So I haven't heard if they are as of yet, but I can make that request. I think it'll be nice to have everyone involved in that.
I think so, yep.
So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will be honest, I don't feel, like, strongly... I feel like you guys are more than capable of, with the Town Accountant, of handling it, but I appreciate being involved, and I'll be there if I'm invited.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, if I could, like, I just... So like, I just actually have... I just actually have two more quick updates, and one is about our COVID-19 response. Over the last week, we've spent a lot of effort on our response efforts. I mean, I want to thank... So I want to especially thank our public health nurses on tonight. I want to thank the Board of Health staff for their continued efforts as well. So as we've been updating everyone, we're continuing to... As we've been updating everyone, we've been continuing to adapt to the guidance, so that is coming down from the state and federal government. So as we know as well, we're continuing our priority on contact tracing as well. So our public health nurse has really been working on this. So when she's here, I just want to ask her if she has any... So actually, additional updates based on what she's seeing and hearing.
Nicole Mello, do you have any update for us?
Good evening. In regards to our COVID numbers, they've stayed about the same. We have received new guidance this morning from the state in isolation and quarantine and some changes. I think that these are some positive changes, and hopefully, it will help the residents of Dighton. So we're looking forward to implementing that right away.
Now, Selectman Sograffis.
Nurse Mello, were the changes from the state related to the changes that came down from the CDC?
Yes, it looks to me, from when I looked at both of them, that they mirrored exactly. It didn't look like the state changed anything, though they are holding off on anything in regards to healthcare workers. They haven't released that yet. There's still in talks about that, but the other ones seem to mirror exactly what the CDC announced.
Awesome. Thank you.
So just for the public to know, that the past week, we had forty-seven new cases of COVID. Week before, that was sixty-two. Week before, that was fifty-six. And the week before, that was seventy-three. And last week, the biggest group of ages, it was zero to nineteen, was the biggest number of people. I think it was twenty... Maybe twenty-three, twenty-four people, and it was nobody over the age of sixty-four. I don't know what the numbers are in relation to vaccinated people, but that's the number for the town. So thank you, Nicole Mello, for your report.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Did you also... Just because it's related to this conversation, should we mention the Taunton Clinic? Did you want to... Anyone want to mention that that's opening for vaccinations?
You can mention...
I don't know, like, all the specifics.
Yeah, no, it was on our Facebook page, right?
It is, yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember.
So like, I posted on our website and to the Town Facebook page as well. So yesterday morning... The state administration, like, actually announced the opening of a vaccine clinic. Like, actually, like, I believe it's going to be on Trimmer Street in Taunton. At the Northwoods... So at the Northwoods Medical Building, I believe.
Oh, yes, yes. Right near the industrial park, I think.
Bay Street.
So I'm sorry, Bay Street. Sorry, I shouldn't pretend I'm from Taunton.
That's near the industrial park.
Yes.
That medical center? Okay.
Okay. So like, and it's going to be open for vaccines, I believe, starting on January sixth. So in all the information on the location, the hours of sign-up, so actually outlined on the Town Facebook page and on the Town website.
Do you mind if I just read this real quick? Take just a second.
Sure.
So again, as the town administrator said, it is opening January sixth. The location is two zero zero five Bay Street in Taunton, Mass, Northwoods Medical Center. The Taunton COVID-19 Vaccine and Booster Clinic will have the capacity to administer four hundred doses daily. Appointments are now available by visiting vaxfinder.mass.gov. Language translation services will be available on-site, administering primary series for individuals five years of age or older, as well as boosters. Booster ambulance will serve as the provider, and I think you can still go if you're interested, get your shots at, like, Walgreens, CVS, all those normal places as well. Thank you.
Selectman Hull.
Would it be possible, what Dr. Sograffis just read?
Mm-hmm.
Copy to the Council on Aging, to get the word out to their people? And also, I noticed Mr. Gales is here this evening, and Mr. Gales has put together a list of people that he contacts, shut-ins, people with disabilities, that if he could coordinate and get the word out to them, Mr. Gales, that would be deeply appreciated.
I can contact my list and let folks know that that's available, so that they're aware of it.
And does the town provide a possibility... I know a year ago, we talked about volunteers helping with some of the shut-ins as far as transporting them for vaccinations of the COVID at the time. But I'm wondering, could that possibly be done for people who can't get to the flu clinic?
Well, it's not the flu... It's not the flu clinic.
The answer to that part of your question a little bit, I can only refer to it as it relates to people who self-identify as a person with a disability. Not all shut-ins have disability. Most do. In those cases, if the resident contacts me, I can make arrangements to either have with the town nurse potentially, and I can refer the information to the Board of Health or to the nurse specifically, so that she can make arrangements for them to either have a home visit, if that's available, or if they have disability, we can make arrangements if they need to, through the state, to have them transported to a facility through the Mass Health System and the Medicare System. So there are avenues to do that, but I would coordinate that if I get requests with the town's nurses as well.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gales.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is old business update on proposed Bristol-Plymouth Regional Technical School MSBA project. Is that just regarding the date, or we have another update?
So yeah, no, I just... So I just wanted to provide for the public certification. I wanted to make sure that it was understood that the date of the special election, like, at this point, is now scheduled for... Is now scheduled for Saturday, March fifth, at the Dighton Elementary School, from nine AM to three PM. So as of last month, it was scheduled for January twenty-ninth, but based on a vote of the BPE School Committee, I believe last... I believe last week, they changed the date.
Yes.
And the date, as I mentioned, is now March fifth, from nine AM to three PM at DES.
It was a special meeting?
Selectman Sograffis.
Mr. Administrator, and also Selectman Hull, I recall you both were present at a meeting where local communities and leaders came together to discuss concerns and other things with the BP project, and my question is, at that meeting, or in any interaction that anyone has had since they made this decision to move the election, has there been any talk of the BP officials doing more outreach, more public education?
Um, I attended that meeting, and after the meeting, I met with our representative, Ed Dutra, and the Superintendent of Bristol-Plymouth, and I asked them if they would be okay with coming back before us. By suggestion, I attended the Rehoboth Forum. They had a meeting that was dedicated just to the project. Good PowerPoint presentation, opportunity to ask a lot of questions. It was well-attended by seniors primarily, but the focus of that meeting was just the BP project. I asked if they'd be willing to do the same, and they said yes. Today, I spoke with the administrative assistant, Tracy, and Monday or Tuesday of next week, Mr. Mullin, could you be in contact with BP to set up a date?
Absolutely.
I spoke to her today, and she said they're closing like we are for the rest of the week.
Yeah, okay.
So that next week, if you'd be in touch, we can get a date for a public forum.
No problem at all.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and thank you for putting that idea out there. I think it's really important for the community, and so I really appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, we've discussed that the last couple of meetings about having a public meeting. It should be just on this BP, not a regular Selectman's meeting. So sometime in February, I would...
And I'd be...
January, anytime, obviously, before. January, anytime, obviously, before the election itself.
We could even do, like, a, if you want, I make myself available for, like, a in-between, our normal meeting?
Oh, yeah, I don't want it to, I reckon, I want just to be devoted to this and let the public know that we're, we've invited these people and they're gonna explain their project to all of the residents in town.
Thank you.
I'll call, I'm gonna turn on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Selectmen's reports and comments. We do discuss an act on acceptance of the $151,250 State Municipal American with Disability Act grant. I'm gonna turn this over to Selectman Segraffas.
So I'm not going to, I, I do have comments, but personally, I feel like it's more appropriate to start our comments off with perhaps words or remarks from our ADA coordinator regarding the grant.
Sure, I just want to thank you. You were involved with this grant, as well as town administrator, as well as Kevin Smith, Parks and Recreation Chairman and ADA Coordinator Jonathan Gale. Do you want to comment on this, Mr. Gale?
Sure, can we sit here or?
As long as they can.
So, yeah, the mic might be easier, Jonathan? If that's okay?
So, the, the grant from the Mass Office of Disability, as, as stated already, is approximately $151,000, with the town putting in resources for an additional almost $65,000, which makes the total value of the grant roughly $212,000. So I think that that, that's pretty awesome for the town of Dayton. What the grant is going to do, or some of the things that the public will see over the next six months, is the ramp or hill, whatever you want to call it, that takes us to the Town Hall is going to be replaced with a long, winding, comfortably walkable sidewalk with railing, as well as stairs, if you don't want to go do the long walk, which won't be that long. It'll be fully ADA compliant. There'll be shrubs and so forth and bushes in those areas as well. So aesthetically, it's not just gonna be ADA compliant, but it will have a different look to it completely, and I think all residents will be very happy with that. The, several of the parks will have sidewalks now that will take people to the areas where you can sit and you can have snacks, or share activity time with your family and children, so it'll take you to the benches, and also to the play areas. That includes the, the basketball courts, the tennis courts, some of the other fields as well. And for everything, first of all, I have to thank Mr. Smith for all of his drawings. He did yeoman's work on that. I can't see them, of course, but every single person I heard from said that his, his drawings and his, his designs that he submitted with part of this grant were absolutely amazing. So thank you, Kevin, for, for all of that. So our parks will have that upgrade as well. The restrooms in Town Hall will all be redone so that they're, they're ADA compliant. There'll be the ramp to my front right here, which will be done as well, so that anyone can use the stage. The town's website will be overhauled and redone so that it's fully accessible. That's gonna be a very involved process and project as well, so that anyone has access to it. That'll also ultimately involve training folks who are posting on the website how to post a little bit differently and so forth as well. So that's another part of it. There are just, there are several factors, and I could go on, but I think you get the idea. This is gonna drastically change some of the landscape of our town in terms of what we provide for ADA services and resources. And as noted in the grant as well, it's going to allow the town to bring in other opportunities with, with regard to best buddies, Special Olympics, other activities, other programs. So this is one component towards being able to do that down the road. We have other things in the works that we're looking at and talking about for ideas for grants and possibilities to revamp some more areas. I know Mr. Smith is, is deeply involved in that. I'm deeply involved in that. And I know where town administrator is as well, to making us, my mask is slipping, I'm sorry, as accessible as, as possible. So if you put this together, and then you put the other things that we're doing, such as the middle school, which is almost finished, just waiting for the railings to, to come in and be installed, and some other things that are going on. This town has put a lot of resources and a lot of effort in the past year into ADA compliant matters that make a big difference for all of our residents. I was out, I will say, recently, looking at the intersections that have been completed recently through the other grant we got for almost $120,000. Those intersections, for the most part, they're as compliant as they can be, considering the old sidewalks that were there, considering what's underneath them, water mitigation, things like that. So in the past year, the Dayton residents should know, we've put, one way or another, roughly $400,000 through grants between the streets, between this one we've just got, everything else, into making this town more accessible for all of our residents. So I would have to thank our town administrator, the Board of Selectmen, those of us who worked directly on putting this grant together, the team that worked on it diligently, and those of us who actually wrote it and submitted. We are, as far as I know, we may be the only grant that got approved for this amount of money this year. So kudos to everybody who worked on it, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I just want to comment that this is a great opportunity for our town to make it so that every, all residents are able to access our buildings and our parks and everything else. So it's a great job that you guys have done. Selectman Hull.
Actually, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
You mentioned $400,000 in grant money that has come in this year. I know Mr. Smith, Mr. Mullin, Dr. Z, and yourself worked on that grant. Were, were there any other people involved?
We, we worked with Tom Ferry on that. He gave us input in terms of what we could do, what he could provide for resource. We worked with Jamie Aguirre, the building commissioner, on the mitigation that we need to do for the restrooms, for this ramp here as well, to get the estimates and all that sort of stuff, yes. So those are the folks, you know, if you add those other gentlemen who are fully and directly involved, as we go forward to put this together, it's also ultimately gonna bring in other departments of the town who are gonna be on board or need to be on board, and I'm sure they will be, so that we can make this fully successful. I think the biggest hurdle initially is just gonna be when we do the Town Hall ramp, because that's gonna involve some short changes while the connections are made and all that sort of stuff. But yes, there have been others involved.
Selectman Hull.
Dr. Z, forgive me, I, I, you, you can help me with this.
Mm-hmm.
With the exception of yourself.
Mm-hmm.
All of the names that have been mentioned are employees of the town of Dayton. And with the exception of Mr. Smith, who is an elected position, all of these individuals go through an evaluation process. And I would like to draft a motion that would, from the Board of Selectmen, present a letter of commendation to be placed in their files, or handed, in the case of Mr. Smith personally. This is a significant accomplishment, and I know from passing by the office every day the hours that all of you put in, in Mike Mullin's office. I'd go by there, they'd be in there, they'd be in there, they'd be in there.
I think he was ready to kick us out a few times.
One of the things that happened as a result of this grant, Town Hall is going to be ADA compliant. That is a significant accomplishment. That was one of the goals that when Mr. Gales came on board, that was one of the reasons why we brought him on board. And you're working diligently to reach ADA compliance for this town. So with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen draft and present letters of thank you and appreciation to Thomas Ferry, James Aguirre, Jonathan Gales, Kevin Smith, and Town Administrator Michael Mullin.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to say, um, I think this is, I'm really glad you brought this up. I think it's really appropriate, because I think this is another example of employees going above and beyond and outside of their ascribed job duties.
Absolutely.
To help the town. And I think that doesn't get mentioned enough. This is actually quite common. We may not always get the grants, but there is always an employee somewhere in that building, or Old Town Hall, or the library, or anywhere else, that is writing one. And I, that's just above and beyond. A lot of towns, and I will remind people, this also saves the town money, not just getting the grant, but when employees go above and beyond, outside of their job, to write grants, that, that saves us money. It's a big deal. A lot of towns have grant writers. They literally pay someone a handsome salary to write grants all day. We don't have that, so that's why we do it. So I just wanted to say, um, it really was a privilege to do this. I'll have more remarks when we make the actual motion.
Sounds like you're opposed to this motion.
If I, if I, I don't know if I'm allowed to speak, or yeah?
Yes.
I would just say, I did post on our website, for the COD website last night, with a typo or two, as was pointed out to me by Mr. Smith. I have to say, instead of C, I, I put a T in there by mistake, but anyway, having said that, I did note that the employees and the volunteers in this town, from my perspective, everyone gives 200%, and I noted that. This could not be done, and these things aren't possible, and I agree with what Brett said, without the, the diligence and the efforts that everybody puts in. You know, part of this is just writing the grant and putting it together, and we all do that as a team. But once you get the grant, that's when the hard work really begins, because we have obligations to make sure that we meet deadlines, that we put it together, that we bring everybody else, who's not even part of this team yet and doesn't even know it, into the fold, to make sure that this works and gets done and gets done responsibly. So there are a lot of other employees that are gonna deserve just as much kudos as you're giving to, to those of us who've done it so far right now.
Thank you.
Sure.
So before I call for a vote, I'm gonna ask that the chairman of the Parks and Recreation speak on the grant also, if you don't mind.
I just want to let you guys know that I'll be out of the country for the next six months, so congratulations. This was, this was a huge opportunity for Parks and Rec, because we had the opportunity to take some facilities that were otherwise, you know, completely inaccessible, and create pathways that we could build off of in the future to make improvements. So obviously, it's not gonna make our parks fully accessible. The biggest impact will be at the basketball and tennis courts. The work that we're doing there, creating sidewalks and ramps, and, and one stairway will make those courts fully accessible. And then, once we have the opportunity to do some paving, that, that facility will be in really, really good shape. But the other areas that we focused on were the school lane playground and the lane field playground as well. And what we, what we're doing there is we're creating pathways to existing features that are there, and encompassing being able to access the picnic tables with, using any type of mobility device. And also, it's planned out so that we can, one, tie the future parking lots into it, and also then expand off of it. So as we make improvements to playgrounds or play structures, you'll be able to come off of those sidewalk areas and then access them. And it also, you know, creates a new look for the parks, because we have, we have a lot of parks in town, but we, they're all just kind of plain grass, there's not much going on, so it gives us the opportunity to kind of add a little, you know, pizzazz, I guess.
Selectman Hull.
Well, I have both of the, the, the money that you received from this grant, will any of it be used toward the Main Street project with water and DPW for the curb cuts and the sidewalk?
The answer to that question is no.
Okay.
This is very specific. We needed to provide information for each component of the grant. When we submitted the grant, we broke every, we submitted as one large grant, but with all these different components, I think we had nine or 11 altogether. They could have funded any part of it, or all of it, or none of it, and they chose to fund all of it, which we're very lucky about. I think we all felt if we had put other things in there and gone even higher on our ask, it probably would have not gotten approved. They generally only approve one over $150,000 per year. So we were extremely lucky. We were $1,500 over that, roughly, and they approved it. If we had done any more, I don't know if we would have gotten it. But there are other types of grants that I'm thinking about and that I want to be able to, to work with Mr. Ferry on as well, and town administrator, to, to look into expanding what we're already doing. I know we've already talked about other ideas for the sidewalks, for the areas that you've talked about for Main Street, and looking into some other possibilities in the next year.
One thing, too, that I want to add to, is part of the grant, too, we did designate a dollar amount, I believe it was $15,000, to purchase grass mats. And what grass mats are, is a, is a one-inch-thick hard rubber mat that can be placed over pretty much any material, but it can be placed over grass specifically. Grass can grow through it, it can be mowed, but it still creates an accessible pathway. That's something new that the Massachusetts Architectural Access Board recently approved as an accessible surface, and we're gonna be utilizing those as well to help the folks over at the Community Garden, and working with one of the Eagle Scout, with the Eagle Scout Project. He'll, he'll be constructing the ADA garden beds, and then we'll be providing the grass mats, so that, one, you can fully encircle those two beds and also get to the ramp to the shed over there. So we'll be utilizing some of that product for that project. And then also, too, it gives us the opportunity in the parks, whether it be at an event or just for daily use, to create accessible walkways to certain, you know, accessible features that we do already have.
So, for example, just to, to take that even a step further, we met earlier this past week at the, the site where the Community Garden is going to be, so that we can map out where the beds are going to be going and design them and so forth. Kevin, again, is gonna put his drawing expertise to use. Thank you very much in advance, and always, by the way, for that, again, so that we, the, when they're, when they're designed, they know exactly where they're laying them out with the measurements and everything. But just to, to take that further with the mats, when we have the, the Firecracker Event this summer, for example, we can take those mats and we can put them, lay them out, so that people with disability, wheelchair walker, whatever, can get from the parking areas to the track area safely and comfortably. So again, those are transferable, they're movable, they're storable, they're not permanent anywhere, so that we, again, we're giving our residents opportunities to participate in other activities. If they decided to do fireworks at a field, a different field or something like that, we can put mats down so that residents can get to them temporarily for then take them up and put them back in storage.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gale, and thank you, Mr. Smith, for all the work you have done on this, this grant here.
We have to vote.
Yeah, no, I know that, yeah.
I used to forget all the time.
No, no, I have forgotten to in the past.
I used to write it down.
I just think that, before we take the vote, if we're gonna give this recognition to Mr. Smith, we do it at the Firecracker Event, after he's been dunked in a few times in the tank, so.
Yeah, absolutely. He'll earn it, make him work for it.
I'll call for a vote. Selectman Segraffas?
Aye.
Selectman Hull?
Aye.
And Campuchico as an aye.
Aye.
So I'm gonna ask for a vote to accept the grant.
Mr. Chairman, I motion to authorize Town Administrator Mullin to accept on behalf of the Board of Selectmen the grant award from, in the amount of $151,250 from the Massachusetts Office on Disability.
Second.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, just, I'll be very brief. I actually wrote it, so I stick to it. So part of the reason why I felt like this grant was important, and the reason why I wanted to be involved in it, is I have always felt that everybody, every person that lives in this town has a right to access and participate in the public services and recreational amenities that are afforded to us by our taxpayer dollars. It is a right, not a privilege, to participate in our government, in our community, regardless of ability, and I believe that this grant will make us much, much closer to that reality. And it's also why I have supported our transparency initiatives, getting everything online, getting a YouTube and social media, because we want to make it easier for people to participate, not harder. We want to bring people in. So I wanted to thank everybody who participated in this. I also wanted to remark, and I hope you don't take any offense to it, Mr. Gale, but I did want to highlight how much of a privilege it was to work on this with someone who does have a visual impairment and will benefit from it, but he didn't do it, because he would benefit from it. He did it because he saw the value in everybody else who hasn't been able to participate being able to participate now. So I wanted to thank you, Mr. Gale.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Segraffas. I'll call for a vote. Select, uh, Selectman Segraffas?
Aye.
Selectman Hull?
Aye.
And Campuchico as an aye.
Good work, gentlemen.
Good work, great work.
Thank you.
Update for the Capitol Outlay Committee. We met on December 16th, and we discussed different projects. We discussed the BP project. We also discussed, what we'll be discussing further on in this agenda, the repeaters for the Police and Fire Department. We also have scheduled some meetings now with different department heads. We're gonna start going, they've submitted their reports to us, their five-year plans to us, and we're gonna start meeting with different department head members to discuss their plans for the next year, regarding the budget, plus their five-year plan. First meeting is on January 18th, and we're gonna meet twice. First meeting is on January 18th, and we're going to meet twice in February. I believe we'll also meet twice in January, but a separate meeting without the department head, I think, coming in, so.
I forget, to be honest with you. I can't keep track of all these dates right now. There's a lot of swirling dates in my head.
Someone somewhere knows.
Yeah.
And it was mentioned earlier about the James Briggs Garden. We did meet the other day with Kevin Smith and the ADA coordinator, but also Rachel Conti, as well as Theo, and we discussed his project, where it's going to be laid out, and he's doing a great job. The wood was delivered today for the raised beds, the two raised beds, and the Commission on Disabilities purchasing those, the wood for those, that project. So, we're looking forward to that happening.
I do.
Yep. Selectman Hull?
Getting back to Capital Outlay Committee. Timelines are important to me, and I'm eagerly looking forward to a priority list from Capital Outlay. Is that being unrealistic for this year, that they could report or have a report for us at some point before the end of the fiscal year as to, you know, their priority list and...
You're talking about their five-year priority list?
Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure. That would be our goal, but because we're also going to be working on the budgets also for the different departments for next fiscal year. I think it may be in July, but that's something clearly we should be working on and obviously report back to the Board as to what we think are the priorities. We have the final say, as well as the residents, obviously. But we would have suggestions to the Board of Selectmen as to what we think should be prioritized, and then we can, at a board meeting, we can, meetings, we can discuss.
My observations of the town over the past 30 years, this is long overdue. And I'm excited for it, because as someone involved in the decision-making process, it'll certainly be a compass for me, very helpful in deciding what projects to advocate for and which ones we realistically can afford at this time.
No, I, I agree with you. I think it's very important. I mean, just a couple of years ago, 2018, we had, we were forced to buy the modules for the school. It was kind of just dropped in our lap. It was like immediate. There was no planning on that. We, I would have preferred a brick-and-mortar addition versus modulars, although the modulars are great. We had to come up with that money out of stabilization. So by doing this, we're now planning. We all have wants and needs. We've got to prioritize the needs, look at the wants, obviously, but prioritize the needs for the town and what the residents want. So, I think this is a great opportunity for the town, and we'll be reporting back to the Board on a regular basis. Yes?
Selectman Hull, were you asking for like an update, or asking when the final Capital Outlay Plan would be?
Well, nothing, Capital Outlay Plans are not final. Obviously, they're going to send it to us. We're going to get, you know, once that plan is presented to us, then it's presented to the voters, or the people in town, all people, not just the voters, the young, will have input. You know, I, I'm thinking of one project in particular up in North Dayton that a lot of the young people, I'm sure, are going to be looking forward to work on that playground, revitalization of that playground. We'll be getting input. Capital Outlay will get input, and based on that input, the priority, priorities may change, but it'll open and generate discussion.
Yeah, nothing will be written in stone, and obviously, the BP project, if that passes, it's really going to impact this town here as to what our plans are for the future. So, we're going to be looking at that carefully, so we won't be finalized anything. Let's see how the vote goes. I've made my position clear that I'm opposing it. And hopefully, we'll have residents that will be also come to our meeting, the public meeting in February, so that we can discuss this and see what their plans are. I am not opposed to BP. I don't, you know, not everybody goes to college, not everybody wants to go into business. There are different trades that people, kids want to get involved in, so I support them 100% for whether or not they need 300, and I keep saying 305, but it's actually more than that, it's a $325 million building.
305.
305, yeah.
300, okay.
But 180 million of which will need to be absorbed by the, I, at the end of the day, by the member communities.
Right, and I think our obligation is 22 million or 20?
Yes, between 21 and 22 million, based on how they structured the debt service.
And as former Senator Everett Dirksen used to say, a million here, a million there. After a while, it adds up to real money. So, I think he actually used a billion, but in our case, it should be a million. Selectman Hull?
Mr. Pacheco, I want you to understand that you don't stand alone. I also oppose that project.
Yeah. Yeah, we won't formally be taking a vote on it, but I've stated my position. I think the Board has stated their position, so I think we're all on the same page. Okay, new business. Review, discuss, and act on acceptance of a $16,869 state community compact cabinet IT grant for network infrastructure upgrades. Has everybody looked at the, that we've got, the grant that we received? I will entertain, if there's no discussion on it, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion to authorize Town Administrator Mullen to accept, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the grant award in the amount of $16,869 from the Massachusetts Executive Office for Administration and Finance.
Second?
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Gravas?
Aye.
Selectman Hull?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye.
Good work, sir.
Thank you.
Another grant that the town got. It's amazing.
Putting Dyton on the map.
Yep.
May I say one other thing? The grants that we've gotten, we've, I don't mean we've put Dyton on the map, but we have gotten a lot of grants from many different departments. That gets noticed. They look at your grant history, so it is a really good thing. So, just wanted to thank everybody.
It's great, and if we don't apply for these grants, other towns will get the grants.
That's the point.
And if there's things that we have to do, like ADA compliance, it's going to cost the residents tax money for that.
We want Dyton to get its slice of the pie back, so that Plymouth doesn't get it, or Carver, or Taunton, or any other municipality. We want our money to come back to the town to help our community.
Right, I agree. The next agenda item is review, discuss, and act on the funding for the Dyton Emergency Response Communication Project with Dyton American Rescue Plan Act of Opera, using Opera funds. We've discussed this at the Capital Outlay Committee. We've discussed it with the Board here. And are there any questions about the need for this or the expense we're going to be using Opera funds? It's $273,719.76 that we'll be using out of Opera funding for this. And it's a, it's a needed, it's a very needed equipment that the Fire Department, as well as the Police Department, needs, and our EMTs. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve and fund the Dyton Emergency Communications Project in the amount of $273,719.76 to be funded from the town's non-entitlement Opera funding to support the public health response as outlined in the proposed project narrative.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
I do, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Administrator, so I obviously am going to support this without question. My one question would be, and it's more just from my knowledge. I understand, or I thought, was under the impression, I should say, that not all of the total money that Dyton is, I don't know, entitled to, or should get, has been distributed to the town. So my question would be, after the Board, I think, votes to approve this, how much of the Opera funds, I want, I'll guess I'll call them liquid, so like money we've already gotten, how much would remain?
So, so as of the end of June 2021, we had half, we had half our local share. So our, so our total local share is $832,000. Half of that is $416,000. Then when you subtract out the $273 from that, we have roughly 100 and, hold on a second, I'm trying to do quick math.
It's okay. Ballpark, yes.
Yeah, like what is that, like $150,000 left from the first half of our local share? So then we've, so then at the Board's last, then at the Board's last week meeting, you committed $5,000 for the contact tracing?
Yep.
So roughly, out of the $416,000 in just our first allotment of the local share, we'll have roughly $145,000 left from that.
Okay.
Then I believe we get the, then I believe we get the second half of our local share at the end of this June.
Okay.
So that is the other half of the 416,000, no, the other half of the 832,000. But then, we also have the ability, which we're going to do, we also have, we also are eligible to apply, I, through the Bristol County Commissioners, we have an additional, like, about $1.5 million available to us, so from that. And again, there were strict uses on that.
Correct.
So I believe there were six, so I believe there are very, I believe there was, there are six very strict categories in which we need to fall, in which the project needs to fall under. So, but yeah, we'll have a total of roughly, 1.5 plus another 416,000, plus the remaining 145,000 available for the rest of our Opera funding budget.
May I ask another question?
Yes.
Thank you. So, I promise, this is my last question about this. So, in that interim, between, you know, now and end of June 2022, before the new fiscal year starts, we will have like 145, so we just need to be mindful of those funds?
Yes.
For the next, okay, my, I lied. I do have one more question. I'm sorry.
I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised at all.
My last question is, are there, the restrictions on the 1.5 million, it's basically water sewer? I, I'm summarizing.
Water sewer, broadband, supporting the public health response.
Yep.
Then there is a, there is like a revenue loss category as well, which is a...
I remember that, yeah.
Which is a little more stringent. And then I want to say, there's one other category that I can never remember, but yeah, those are the general categories.
Are those?
So education is one of them as well.
Do those restrictions apply to the local aid that you're referring to? Okay, so it's all, okay. It's all the same?
So it's all encompassing, and they get rated and grading according...
Okay.
According to the same criteria.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Any more last questions, Dr. Z?
I promise, no.
Selectman Hull?
I, and, Mr. Mullen, you can correct me if I'm wrong. We have many needs in the town, and someone who represents Dyton with the Bristol County Commissioners, we wanted to establish in Dyton a policy in which requests would be submitted and with specific instructions, and I believe it's gotten back to all the department heads, that there'd be no end arounds, that all the requests would come through Town Administrator Mullen and would be handled in an orderly process. And that process would involve review by the Capital Outlay Committee.
Yes.
Which...
Has made a recommendation.
Mr. Pacheco is the chairman of.
I'm not the chairman. I'm not even a voter member. I'm the liaison for the Board of Selectmen.
Um, thank you. But it is important that there be a transparent process, and I'm hoping that Capital Outlay, when they set their priority, will give us rationales for those priorities. Because again, everyone feels their project is important, but there's only so much money. And ultimately, it'll be the Board of Selectmen who will say which ones will be funded and which ones won't. However, we want an independent party to look at it and make recommendations.
May I clarify just one thing? Not to be a stickler. It's, we get a part in it, but it really is, like any capital expense would go before the voters, so voters would get, you know, that.
So we may have recommendations and stuff like that, but it's actually the voters that have the final say. We may recommend.
I just didn't want anyone to leave here thinking we were the sole people making the decisions.
So on the Opera funding, technically, you are?
Correct.
Yes. I just wanted to make.
But broader capital, like a school, a private, yeah.
Yeah, we're talking about the Opera funds.
And the Capital Outlay Committee did make a recommendation on the repeaters for the Police and Fire and...
Yes, and this was also presented to the FinCom during the special timing one process as well. So this has been a long time in the meeting.
So, I don't think we voted on this yet, right?
Yes.
Okay. I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hull?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is also an aye.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator, and Chief McGee and Chief McDonald.
The next agenda item is to review, discuss, and act on DPW surge recommendations and award contract. This one out to bid, and we have a list of all the different bids. Do we need, do we?
We weren't doing them one by one, no.
So no, and the proposed motion would, I'd like to actually approve all of them as presented by Sersage. So at the bottom, and I, and as you did mention, Mr. Chairman, I want to say there's, there's... There's probably like at least half a dozen of them relating to pavement reclamation, relating to asphalt, relating, related to sidewalk construction, to the in-place hot mix asphalt, like in all the accom, in all the accom, in all the accom, in all the accompanying materials as well.
Are there any questions about this?
I have a general question, if I may. Mr. Administrator, so we entered this Sersage group, I want to say, one of the first things that the former town administrator did. So my question, because I don't, I mean, we just vote on these things, and I don't have an idea of how prices compare to like prior years, so I guess my general question to you is, is this group, I should actually ask Mr. Ferry, but I apologize. I will ask him at a later date. Is this group still advantageous to the town?
Oh, absolutely, yes. And Highway Superintendent Ferry is involved in it extensively. So like, I went, so like, so and I actually wanted, and I actually wanted to dedicate and devote actually more time than I have into it as well, but it's a very valuable group, and saves us a lot of effort.
Thank you.
And Selectman, Selectman Ferry, Superintendent Ferry, maybe someday. Superintendent Ferry did offer to come to this meeting. I told him I didn't think it was necessary. We have all this information in front of us. We've always done well, thanks to Mallory.
Yep.
Yes.
We've always done well with this.
I feel like he would have said something too, if the prices weren't.
Yeah.
So, yeah, they're right in line, yeah.
Thank you.
So I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Champ, Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the contract awards as outlined, prepared, and presented by the Southeastern Regional Services Group for the time period from February 1st, 2022, to January 31st, 2023.
Second?
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Dr. Z?
Aye.
Campuchico is an aye, and Selectman Hull?
Aye.
You sign this? The next agenda item is review, discuss, and act on update to Language and Boarding Committee Handbook. And I believe this is for you, Dr. Z, that you've worked on?
Yes. So I will not take the credit. This is something that really, I discussed with Mrs. Kirwin, our administrative assistant, and Mrs. Brady, and sort of what we came up with was, even though we have the Boarding Committee Handbook, there wasn't any language in there for, you know, volunteers come and go. You could have a volunteer today, something happens, they don't have the time commitment, and they leave. Well, sometimes people have data. And what I mean when I say data is like stuff that they worked on for the town in their capacity as a committee member. So that, I felt like there should be some kind of process, because we have had issues in the past when I was first elected with, people would leave, you know, life happens, and then we couldn't find certain things that were important. So we, I felt we should have some kind of a process when we hand this handbook out to volunteers that they know that they do have to give copies of that data to the chair. And if they are the chair, then the town administrator, just so we maintain the town's information. And that's why it's here. Mrs. Kirwin wrote the language. I thought it was fine the way it was. It was perfect, so.
To just let the public know, so it's 2.7.1 data preservation. Any pertinent information data held by committee members who is resigning shall be forwarded to the committee chair prior to their departure. If the committee chair resigns, any pertinent information data held by that individual should be given to the Board of Selectmen's office. So that's the proposed change, or addition, I should say. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we approve the addition to the Boarding Committee Handbook as prepared this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like to say thank you for picking up on this, and I think it's a great idea.
Don't thank me too much. I didn't realize it when I originally wrote it. Better late than never.
Not everybody can accept change, but I'm glad you're, you're willing to accept change.
Absolutely.
I'll call for a vote, Dr. Z.
Aye.
Camp Pacheco is an aye, and Selectman Ho.
Aye.
And thank you, Mrs. Kirwin and Brady.
Next agenda item is to review, discuss, and act on the Dayton Historical Commission's request for a Facebook page. This was presented to our last meeting for the Historic Commission, and it was voted on by the members to form a Facebook page, and I believe the, uh, Town Administrator Mullen will be one of the administrators, but Rapha Delphin, if I'm correct, Mrs. Gail, will be the administrator for the Historic Commission. Are there any questions regarding this?
My only, our only thing is that when, when it is a page, you know, that committee will self-monitor or create the content, but again, we just always ask that the town administrator, because again, people come and go, volunteers come and go, we don't want the person who created the Facebook page to then leave and now nobody can access it, so that, that's, that's the only reason why, um, that's a thing. But I do appreciate the idea, I love this, I think it's going to be great in terms of the fantastic things that the Historical Commission is doing, the grant monies that they have brought into the town, so kudos, and I support it.
The only question I have, being the rookie on the board of this, have, has the Board of Selectmen ever denied a request by, um, the department or the commission to create a Facebook page?
We haven't, but the only pages that have ever been created were--
The ADA--
Yep, and the Green Communities one, which was before the social media policy, and no one uses it, because they completed their work. Um, ADA, am I missing one, COD?
The Parks and Recreation doesn't have one.
No, but they said they were going to, um, but I think it's just the COD right now, and, and our town-wide page.
And the Trails.
Oh, I'm sorry, and the Trails, we did approve that one. But again, it was the same, town administrator has access.
Right.
So, no, to the best of my knowledge, no.
I would, you know, I'm going to support this, but I would caution the board to, as time goes on, to take a look at the policy. And clean it up, just, you know, take, keeping in mind potential problems, and try to be proactive, rather than having to react if something blows up.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, um, Town Administrator Aaronstein and I, when we wrote the social media policy, it was several years ago, and there were no, it was just the town of Dayton page, that was it.
Right.
Um, so I'm happy to go back, if you want, um, and discuss, I know you have a lot to do, Town Administrator Mullen, um, but I'm happy to suggest changes, and we can have, bring it back to the board, um, for a broader discussion, but, um, I think that's fine, because, again, we are having more interest by the committees, and that's good, right? We want that, because you want, again, to bring people in, social media can be good for that, but yes, you're right, we should, now that we have more pages being administered by volunteers, we probably should take a look at it again, so I'm happy to bring that back before the board.
No, thank you.
If the, if the chairman is okay.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that.
And thank, again, Mrs. Gales, I think this is great, I will be liking and following the page, I look forward to seeing what you come up with.
So we haven't voted on, we haven't had a motion yet, or entertain a motion for this?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I motioned that we grant the Historical Commission's request to create a public Facebook page, um, and that the town administrator be one of the administrators of the page.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Segoffis.
Aye.
Selectman Ho.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is an aye. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next agenda item is review, discuss, and act on surplus equipment for disposal. The Fire Department has, Chief McGee has submitted a letter of items that he feels that is surplus equipment. Has everybody had an opportunity to review that list?
Yes.
Let me just briefly go through it, Panasonic Toughbook, there's three of them.
Is that a laptop, Mr. Chairman?
I have no idea what a Toughbook is.
I don't know.
Panasonic, and Panasonic says period, doesn't say what it is, HP, Dell, Dell. They're all obsolete. Panasonic AC adapter, HP AC adapter, Dell AC adapter, three of them, Linsky Power Adapter, I believe that's--
Linksys.
Linkset, isn't it, is that ink, I know I get my ink is Linkset.
No, it's like, uh, they do routers and stuff, too.
HON dash Quang Power Adapter, Netgear Power Adapter, Dell Speakers, Linsky Wireless Router, Cisco Router, Dell E Port Two, Netgear Port Switch, and they're all listed as obsolete equipment. I will entertain a motion to make this surplus equipment.
Mr. Chairman, I motion, I don't know why I didn't just say so moved, ugh. Mr. Chairman, I motioned that we approve the equipment disposal list and declare the items on the list as surplus, as requested this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Dr. Z.
Aye.
Selectman Ho.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is an aye.
Thank you, Chief.
We received a, bought, uh, a letter from Janelle Vining, Town Accountant, and James Agia, Facility Administrator. It's actually--
It's from Leanne.
It's from Leanne, yeah. CC, they were CC to the Board of Selectmen, from Leanne, surplus equipment. This is from Tom Ferry, Superintendent, the Highway Department has requested the following items be added to the surplus list, one stainless steel sink, one grease trap, and I believe there's other items, there's a nineteen ninety-three Ford tractor, M eighteen forty-three A, UV twenty-six two zero three, and McConnell Boom Mo, model number PA forty-eight E, and a John Deere diesel engine serial number T zero-two zero-three-nine-T-three-nine-three-two-six-three.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Highway Department's surplus equipment for disposal, uh, the items listed. Do I have to repeat them, or?
As presented.
So the chief, and I, I apologize, but just before we make the motion, so the chief's request was disposal items, are Mr. Ferry's disposal, or things that will go to auction?
They're surplus as well.
But are they for disposal, or are they going to--
They're both.
So, they can't be both?
No. Maybe the items that are obsolete might be disposed of, but he's--
So--
He wants to put these for auction, my conversation--
Yes.
--with Mr. Ferry today.
So yeah, like, everything here is going to the auction.
Okay, good, so you had said disposal in your motion, that's, that's the only reason I asked, because it, I didn't, thought they were going to go to auction, okay.
See, uh--
Hit it out.
And I think part of the confusion is--
Disposal from your motion, the thing.
And I think part of the confusion is that, so it's actually the semantics in which, so in which the memos were outlined, because actually surplus and disposal, surplus and disposal were used interchangeably, but they--
Okay.
Have the same intended meaning here.
Okay.
Should I rephrase it to say, to auction and/or dispose?
No, I think you're fine, I'm sorry. And I will second your motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that, Mr. Administrator.
Is there any discussion?
There is no.
I'll call for a vote, Dr. Z.
Aye.
Selectman Ho.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is an aye. The next agenda item is review, discuss, and act on liquor license renewals. Let me list the renewals, and this, uh, this is from Karen Brady, our executive assistant, Board of Selectmen, after careful, after careful review of the twenty-twenty-two liquor license renewal package, I respectfully ask the Board of Selectmen for approval of the following lic, liquor license. All paperwork has been submitted as and is complete, including inspections by the Fire Chief and Building Commissioner where applicable. Seventeen twelve Tavern Inc., which is at eighteen eighty-one County Street, Taunton Yacht Club, twenty-one twenty-five Water Street, Vinayac Inc., doing business as Johnny's Market, one oh-two Lincoln Avenue, I should have had you read this, Avacaldes Corporation, doing business as Mendoza's Liquors, eighteen ninety-six County Street, Rochelle's Market Inc., doing business, by the way, they have great melasadas on Sunday mornings. Rochelle's Market Inc., doing business as Rochelle's Market, twenty fifty County Street, Alice's Last Stop Inc., doing business as Alice's Last Stop, nineteen oh-one County Street.
They have good food every day.
They have good food every day. And Winthrop Street LLC, doing business as Dayton Golf, nineteen ninety-five Winthrop Street. I also--
We'll do the--
We'll do those first.
Yeah. Are you accepting motion?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Chairman, I motion, and because I didn't say so moved, I'm going to read them again, but very quickly, I motioned that we approve the following liquor licenses, seventeen twelve Tavern Inc. at eighteen eighty-one County Street, Taunton Yacht Club at twenty-one twenty-five Water Street, Vinayac Inc. at one oh-two Lincoln Avenue, Avacaldes Corp. at eighteen ninety-six County Street, Rochelle's Market at twenty fifty County Street, Alice's Last Stop at nineteen oh-one County Street, and Winthrop Street LLC at nineteen ninety-five Winthrop Street.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Ho.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is an aye. Uh, this is also from our executive assistant, Karen Brady. I am also asking for a vote to approve the following licenses contingent upon receipt of all remaining applicable paperwork in a timely manner. Gatorani Inc., doing business as New Fast Market on four twenty Somerset Avenue, and Forty-four Liquors Corporation, doing business as Forty-four Liquors at twenty thirty-five Winthrop, Winthrop Street.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion regarding that? If not, I'll call for a vote, Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is an aye, and Selectman Ho is an aye.
Aye.
I'm saying, Selectman Ho is an aye, not even you voting. He did vote, he did vote in favor of it.
We did. Before we move on, uh, Mrs. Brady, I just wanted to say, this presentation was amazing, you did an excellent job, and, um, thank you, it was very seamless.
Thank you.
Continuing, um, this is from Leanne Kirwin, common Victula license. The following list, um, she's recommended the renewal for the Taunton Yacht Club, twenty-one twenty-five Water Street, Dragon House of Pizza, four twenty Somerset Avenue, Alice's Last Stop, nineteen oh-one County Street, Manham, New England, one twenty-three William Street, CNN Pizza, nineteen sixty-five County Street, Diocese of Fall River, Saint Nicholas of Myra, four ninety-nine Spring Street, seventeen twelve Restaurant and Tavern, eighteen eighty-one County Street, Duncan Dorlands, four twenty Somerset Avenue, and Dayton County, uh, Country Dynast, two thirty-eight Main Street.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Uh, I--
Did I miss something?
These are licensed, so as a result, they need to be worded correctly, and I'm going to ask, in the case of the Diocese of Fall River, Saint Nicholas of--
Myra.
It should be M-Y-R.
No, no, you just, you read it as it was.
Well, it's worded here as Myrna.
And we, we love our town historian, but it is not named, the church is not named after her.
So what is the correct spelling for it?
M-Y-R-A. No N.
Oh, there's no N, okay.
But the license is in there, I think?
Yes.
The license is--
They are, yep.
How is it on the license?
Oh, that's a, yeah, good point.
I believe today we received a communication from former Selectman Nancy Gulat, um, pointing this out. She's not here tonight.
No.
I don't believe it's here. I don't believe any of these, uh--
Oh yeah, those are just the liquor ones, I think.
Well, just make sure that it's correct.
Yeah, if all these, if all these are approved, we can make sure the spelling is--
Yeah, especially if they haven't been written yet.
Thank you.
Did we make a motion and second it?
You were making a motion, and we didn't get a second--
Okay, because we need to get it right.
Selectman Ho had a question regarding--
Wanted to correct the spelling.
Myrna versus--
I stand by that amendment.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on this? If not, I'll ask for a vote, Selectman Segoffis.
Aye.
Selectman Ho.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is also an aye.
May I make one more motion?
Sure.
Yep. Um, I rec, uh, Mr. Chairman, I motioned that the Board of Selectmen approve the following license for renewal pending the filing of necessary paperwork and fees, Nana's Place at two zero three five Winthrop Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Ho.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is also an aye. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Letter of, uh, from Sheila Newt, under correspondent's, donation to Primetime in the amount of thirty dollars. We are pleased to inform you that Primetime has received a donation in the amount of thirty dollars. As usual, all donations are turned over to the Town Accountant and deposited in the Primetime Gift and Donation Account. Should you have any questions or need additional information, please do not hesitate to call. I will ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll step down.
Seconds.
Selectman Ho has seconded it. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Ho.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is also an aye.
This is the communication from Mrs. Gulat, regards to that previous--
We should enter that into the record, now that it's, now that it's in the record.
Yeah, she's written several things, but under the license we know is the church's name is Saint Nicholas of Myra, not Myrna. Uh, Myra was the city in Turkey where he lived. Thanks, that's from Nancy Gulat, so that can be part of the record. Next agenda item is the minutes of December eighth, twenty twenty-one, entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Dr. Z.
Aye.
Camp Pacheco is an aye, and Selectman Ho.
Aye.
Aye. Approval of the warrants.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I motioned that the Board of Selectmen approve the following warrants, all dated December fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, twenty-four A dash twenty-two in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents, twenty-four B dash twenty-two in the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand sixty-four dollars and eighty-eight cents, and twenty-four C dash twenty-two in the amount of one thousand three hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-five cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote, Selectman Ho.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I motioned that we approve the following warrants, all dated December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, twenty-five A dash twenty-two in the amount of one hundred fourteen thousand four hundred forty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents, and twenty-five B dash twenty-two in the amount of two hundred forty-two thousand one hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-six cents.
Is there a second? I'll step down and second that. I'll call--
A second.
Yep. I'll call for a vote, uh, Selectman Ho.
Aye.
Dr. Z.
Aye.
And Camp Pacheco is an aye.
Mr. Chairman, I motioned that we approve the following warrants, all dated December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, twenty-six A dash twenty-two in the amount of one hundred nine thousand three hundred sixty-one dollars and thirty-one cents, twenty-six B dash twenty-two in the amount of thirty-one thousand seven hundred fifty-two dollars and forty-two cents, 29th, 2021. 26A-22 in the amount of $109,361.31, 26B-22 in the amount of $31,752.42, and 26C-22 in the amount of $219,256.79.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye. Public input. Is there anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak regarding in public input? If not, is there anybody here, public input? Just identify yourself, please.
Tom Galucci Palmer Street. I do appreciate hearing that you were opposed to the Bristol Plymouth plan. I think, as we've, as we've said in other meetings, it's just, it's, the spending is just outrageous. $326 million spread out over the several towns, and, and our share, my, my understanding is that our share is $28 million. That's just absurd. And I don't care if it's spread out over 30 years or 40 years or whatever, we can't afford it. You guys want a library? You guys want a new fire station? There's been talk of other capital expenditures that are creeping up on us. The town simply can't afford all this. So we've got to, we've got to kind of rein in the spending. And that's really all I had. I just, I appreciate that and know that we're going to oppose it. Our organization is certainly going to oppose it. Maybe not all of us, but the majority, the great majority of us. And we'll be working in some of the other towns among the other Republican groups as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
May I just add one thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify. There is not necessarily a plan or an idea to do a new fire station. There would be a feasibility study done first to look at, can we improve the existing structure? I think a new fire station is not the first thing in everybody's mind. I just, I didn't want you to leave here with that impression.
No, your point is well taken, that we have projects coming down the road that we need to do versus something like this. And as I've mentioned before, I'm opposed to this particular project, but I'm not opposed to Bristol Plymouth clearly. It's a, it's a great school and great opportunity for students in Dayton.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
My son graduated from that school. It's a fantastic school. It really is. And, and I support them 100%. But this is just, just absurd, and especially in these economic times that we live in. You know, in, in December 2019, we had the greatest economy in American history, and now look at it. So we really need to rein things in. We really need to rein in that spending, and that, that goes across the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public input? If not, I will entertain a motion to.
Mr. Chairman? For those of you that are here this evening, that is why the five-year plan, the Capital Outlay recommendations are going to be so important, and your input, once those are put together, your input is going to be very, very important.
To your point, I do expect to have some input. We were, we were silent. We were out there, but we were silent until last year. Expect more input, particularly after last week, where, what was it, Article 23, was kind of spent anyway. You know, where that money was found. I know, I know that's not particularly on the agenda tonight, but this is public input. So, you know, expect, expect that we're going to be here, we're going to be watching, we're going to be participating, and I would love to be a part of that. We've got a lot of way, just looking at the ways that money's being spent and so forth, and looking at places where we can cut. And I think there is a lot of room for significant cuts across the board. There is in any business. Every, every business, you know, I'm a business owner, I sign the front of paychecks. Every business is now having to make do and do more with less. And there is absolutely no reason the government can't do more with less. So, and, and those savings need to be passed on to the taxpayers, because I like to think that we have, we all have our best interests at heart. Thank you.
Yes.
To your point, Mr. Galucci, about being involved, and I mean this with 100% sincerity. I spent probably the first four, yeah, four years, four, four and a half years of being a selectman with empty seats. And I just want you to know, and I mean this honestly, it's really nice having people here. I know we may not always agree on everything, but it's just nice not having an empty room and talking to a camera. So I do appreciate that you're involved. You have tough questions, and I think it makes us all better public servants. So I really do mean that. Thank you.
Yeah, at the last annual town meeting, we had 72 residents. We spent over $23 million on a budget. So it's nice to see people coming and.
And know what people think.
Yep.
We, we are elected, yes, I understand we represent, but I like to know what people are thinking. When I look out at an, at a empty, a bunch of empty chairs, I have no idea what people are thinking until I get a text or an email or, you know, some sort of a communique from a resident. So again, I really just appreciate it. It's nice having actual people here.
Thank you. There's no further input, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Selectman Hall?
Aye.
Dr. Z?
Aye.
And Campuchico is an aye also. Thank you, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, thank you.